Okay, this is Chairman Mike McCoo calling to order the regular meeting of the Wellington School Building Committee, March first, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty-two P M. We'll first get to present to speak. Comments may be limited in time to allow all present to speak. We'll start in the room. Is anyone here present to speak?
Yes.
Just state your name and.
My name is Steve Troyer, I'm seventy Blair Road in Wellington, and I also do some substitute teaching in the Wellington Schools. Can I just speak from here?
Feel free.
Okay. Pardon me, I've got, the kids love my glasses. Hello. I moved here eighteen months ago. I went to great public schools outside Chicago, O'Heart, where Ernest Hemingway grew up. Since I was a boy, people have continued to complain about tax increases used to fund their great schools, but the property values continue to grow at a pace more rapidly than the surrounding communities where the schools have deteriorated. I was lucky enough to attend Williams College in Massachusetts, and I also went to UC Berkeley for graduate school. I've been the beneficiary of the best public and private education in our country, and my parents and the people who came before me at these institutions and communities to thank. I moved here from California where I've lived for over thirty years. You may have heard of Prop thirteen, a law that was passed back in the seventies where most of the public schools in the state were new and excellent. It restricted state and local communities to tax property based on an assessed value that is arbitrarily restricted to an annual growth rate of no more than one and a quarter percent over time. Property is reassessed when it's sold at the market level, and anything else must be approved by voters. When the law passed, it was hailed as revolutionary, but when you think about it, socialistic is a more accurate description. On the plus side, it enabled people with fixed or dynamic incomes, less dynamic incomes, to stay in their homes over time. But this sort of artificial regulation has many consequences. The most personal was that I paid ten, fifteen, and even forty times what my long-term-time next-door neighbors paid within the different communities in which I lived. But more importantly, education suffered. California is a beautiful and wonderful weather, lots to enjoy, vibrant job engines, agriculture, technology, and entertainment. But overall, the public schools have become progressively much worse over time. What used to be among the top states in education is now one of the worst. There were exceptions in wealthier communities where more expensive homes sell more often, the tax base grows with the reset assessed values. I was fortunate to be able to live in a few of those communities. Also, a small number of forward-thinking communities pass special assess assessments that are hard to pass, very hard to pass, to pay for education priorities. Comparable homes in better or best school districts sell at fifteen to fifty percent premium to surrounding areas with average schools. In a state where the average home value hovers around a million dollars, you can imagine what it takes to afford a home in one of the better or best districts. The net effect of all of this has been that most of California public schools have suffered, and as a result, private schools have flourished. But imagine the business owners trying to attract employees from other states. Also, I remember donating a few thousand dollars a year to the local school foundation for enrichment programs like music, sports, and drama that had been a standard part of my education before the eighties. That's like saying, would you like wheels with your car? I have come to really enjoy Wellington over the last eighteen months. Today and for the last few months, I've taught as a substitute in the, in the schools, so I have some firsthand knowledge of both the quality of the educators, the staff, and the facilities compared to what I've seen for my own children. On the former, your kids are really lucky. But even by California's school infrastructure standards, the buildings here are wanting. The administration and faculty certainly make the most of what we have, but the kids deserve better, and so does the community. Some have said, let's make the education top-notch and not focus on a big fancy new building. In the twenty-first century, your children, and more importantly, the parents who will decide to move here, need a complete package that prepares them for high school and beyond. For example, drama and basketball should not have to compete for the same venues for practices or games and performances, which should in turn be more inviting to the broader community. Wellington is not Silicon Valley or even Fairfield County. That's a good thing. But it has wonderful character and its residents seem to care about the community, education, and the value of their homes. It seems to me that the people have, the community have a clear choice. They can invest in the one thing that will improve both the value of their homes and their children's lives going forward, or they can make a more unfortunate choice, one like the people of California made years ago, effectively either privatizing education or making great public schools available only to the children of the wealthy. I am confident that the people of Wellington will make the right choice. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go online next. Nick?
Nick, hello, forty-nine, Myrtle. I just want to start off, as you know, I've said it before, you know, it's not the building that makes these kids successful, it's the parents, it's the teachers, and it's the drive of the students, not the condition of the building. While I've been in center, it's not that bad from my experience in there. Some of the pictures are blown out of proportion, especially to the right-hand side where the stairway is. There can easily be, be a ramp put in, but that aside, I just wanted to touch on one thing here. Gary, I was looking back in the minutes. Five-four had said that he had a conversation with the developer in regards to hall and center. I just never have heard any follow-up in regards to that, and maybe I should touch upon that.
I'm on the road, yes, I'm on a Mass Pike.
All right, I'm gonna continue. It sounds like somebody in the background there. Okay, so I just want to point out, I want it to be on record, I've said it many times, a conflict of interest. I went back, looked at some of the minutes, and some of the items here I'm gonna point out are, at one point, Erica had motioned and voted to have the Board of Finance ask the Board of Selectmen to hold a vote for a hundred thousand dollars from the townpeople, in which she knew some of that money would be spent on the family property. She knowingly asked for money that would be spent for her family. Erica again voted in executive session and was part of such to have her family talked about in such. She should have never been in that executive session. She did abstain at one point from drafting the letter of intent, but again, she should have never been in there. October nineteenth, Erica motioned and voted yes to request money again to be spent on the family property. She should have never been asking for money for her family. It's a conflict of interest directly. Eleven-two, executive session happened in regards to a letter, letter of intent, and again, Erica voted to be part of that discussion and did not hold out of that meeting. This also happened on eleven-nine. She did abstain on the approving of the letter of intent for the family property, so I do recognize that. I also, you know, would like to know who bottomed line that letter. December seventh, Erica wanted ten thousand dollars for future legal fees, which wasn't an increase from what was being proposed of five thousand dollars. These fees could be used for the family property, being that the property was being heavily pushed. I asked, did the lawyer end up using funds she wanted for her family property on such? In closing, while there has been attempts to make it look like there's no conflict of interest for Erica, then, you know, pretty smooth at times. There have been numerous times where she was involved where she should have never been. As my understanding, she took part in the actual negotiations of such. I am unaware if she was advocating for the town or the family, but she was active in the negotiations. That is fact. But one can only speculate if she was advocating for the town or the family. I'm under the, under the impression that there is a memo of understanding on the property. However, I, I see many times in the, in the minutes that it's not mentioned as a memo of understanding, but it's mentioned as a letter of intent, again, according to the minutes. So is it a memo of understanding or is it a letter of intent? Thank you.
Anybody else online? Anybody else in the room? Okay, thank you all. Moving on to Chairperson Report. First item I'd like to note is, since the votes that were done jointly by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance earlier this week, we are now in what is referred to as a blackout period, which refers to the information that the town can expend funds to disseminate. And essentially what that means for us in this meeting tonight is we continue on our regular business, but we stick only to facts. All of the committee members have to stick only to factual discussions and essentially have to avoid making any promotion or support of any vote in the yay or the nay for the upcoming town meeting or referendum. Having said that, moving on, a lot has happened since our last meeting. As I just mentioned, the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen met on Monday in a joint meeting, which did lead to resolutions and motions leading to a future town meeting and referendum. The week previous, the night after our last meeting, we made a presentation to the Board of Finance. And behind the scenes, we have been working on drafting, putting together draft solicitations, which would be for three different packages of work for us, and these would all be essentially post-referendum if the referendum passes. Committee members have been providing feedback so that we can get the drafts as close as possible, and I do want to state, as we are, we are just as concerned as the residents about conflicts of interest. Scott Pelman, our consultant, is potentially a bidder for future services after referendum if it passes, and as such, he is not included in any of these conversations. He has not participated in anything that could potentially, his company could be bidding on. And as a matter of fact, at the end of the meeting tonight, before we discuss one of those three, he will leave our meeting completely before we talk about it in the meeting. Let's see. We're continuing to take feedback and attempt to get answers, but again, being careful now that we're in the blackout period. So our answers will be, to the public will be purely about facts and typically about things that have already been released in the public. And a discussion is underway with OSCGR about the possibility of a site walk for them to take a look at the potential piece of property and provide any guidance they may have if this goes forward. That's it for Chairperson Report. We're going to skip approval of the minutes because we determined they weren't posted in the proper timeline, so they have been posted today. So we're gonna put this off until the next meeting. Oh, they'll be filed tomorrow, I'm sorry. Regardless, they won't be voted on tonight, so we'll deal with this at the next meeting. As far as communications. I'm sorry, was there a question? Anne, go ahead.
Mike, when does the blackout period end? Does that end after the referendum?
It ends with the referendum.
It ends at eight P M. when the referendum ends.
Okay, thank you.
For communications, I have updated board members with any of the emails from the SBC inbox. We had a peak level of traffic in December and January. If you'll notice, in the month of February, there were only ten emails, and some of those were continuations of previous conversations. So you all have that. Postcard was distributed last Friday. We're not gonna discuss the content, so we're on to subcommittee reports. Land assessment, the revising and updating of the previous appraisal is underway, and a second appraisal has been contracted. We're expecting both of those in the next week or so. Environmental report is pending. Scott will discuss that in his report. The land assessment matrices or matrices, either one is correct, I've learned, will be released. We just have to finish. I think everyone's had a chance to review them now, and we've gotten some feedback about some spelling errors and things like that. I also went back through minutes of subcommittee meetings and made sure that the information from the minutes in the meetings was updated on the land assessment matrices. Finance, do we know if there's a finance subcommittee report?
Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We, we have not formally met, and we submitted our statement from the financial office on our expenditures today at the last meeting. I'm not sure if anything has changed in that respect, because I have not seen an updated ledger, but I believe it's essentially the same as it was at our previous meeting. If not, I'm sure Phil can update us. The only thing I'll add is a considerable amount of work was done by individual members of the finance subcommittee, as well as Ralph, who did the lion's share on, on the spreadsheet that he put together trying to better illustrate the costs of this project. I'm disappointed that it would, we were unable to share that information at any of the meetings today. Other than that, good.
Just one comment on that. Ralph's spreadsheet was shared on the screen at a previous meeting and was available during that meeting on the screen, to the point where it was, in fact, screenshotted and shared publicly as well. So it has been shared. And as was discussed in other meetings, it, it did not become the official tool of the SBC because of the simple fact that it is a there, it's a very powerful mathematical tool, but it requires assumptions that we just don't have to be able to get legitimate numbers from it. The math is legitimate. Just the answers, we can't get legitimate answers without being able to predict things that are not predictable. It was also available and discussed at the Board of Finance. Right, it was discussed at the Board of Finance meeting as well. Communications, anything new there? We had the flyer, working on our B R Qs. And a couple of updates are coming to the F A Qs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so those will be out in the next couple of days also. Old Business Owners Project Manager Collier's update. Scott, you're up.
Thank you, Mike. Evening, everyone. Scott Pelman from Collier's Project Leaders. Yeah, I've spoken a couple of times this week to Lynn from Eagle Environmental. They're the environmental company that was hired to assess the, the future parcel with the successful referendum where the school will be built. The good news, again, you know, as of last report, they were waiting for some final testing. They had put in three ground monitoring wells, and we're taking water samples of those wells. I just want to quote him directly. There was no pesticides, no petroleum, no lead whatsoever. They did find a, a very few things of naturally occurring materials. And just to let you know, you know, the threshold on one, the standard to trigger something would be a standard of one part per million. And what they found in, in some of these naturally occurring materials was point zero zero four. So four thousandths of a part per million. So there is no, currently in environmental concerns, they're wrapping up their report. As part of the remediation, they estimate that just this debris that had been discarded on that site should fit within about a thirty-yard dumpster, so the remediation cost should be very, very minor. At that time, under the project, again, if the project passes referendum, the, the architect will be required to hire an environmental engineer to make sure that all this material is properly specified, properly removed and disposed of. They'll take some additional testing at that time, but very good news on the parcel. It, it's clean, except for a minor remediation of that debris, and it should be more than suitable for, for the construction of a project.
Thank you. You have anything else, Scott?
I think under new business, you know, I'll talk of, you know, we've got the oh-five-three site selection. I'll just talk about that briefly.
Okay. Any questions from the committee for Scott? Okay, moving on for now. Old Business Updates to the F A Qs, as I said before, we'll have a couple of updates that will go on the F A Qs, which are from questions from the public, and because we're being very careful about how we present any information right now, it will essentially be material that is already out in the public, and it will not be advocating for a choice in referendum. It will just be a matter of clarifying some facts or restating some facts based on questions asked. Onto blackout period details. Erica, do you want to add anything, or have we covered what we need?
I think you've covered what we need there. Not only is there statutory language, the town has an ordinance, the authorizing explanatory text of local proposals ordinance. So I think what's important is that the text that is approved is, does not include language that promotes either a yes or a no vote and being conscious of what could be considered expending town funds.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee before we move on? Okay, new business. R F Qs, I'm gonna sort of lump these two together, architectural design and then the construction manager. These are not things that Scott would be potentially bidding on, so he's joining us for this conversation. Scott, do you want to just kind of do a quick overview on those?
Yeah, really, yeah, I guess just briefly, what we've done is we've gone ahead and put together the requests for qualifications. These are not the proposals yet, but the qualifications for both the construction management firm and architectural design firm. The, and we would anticipate, you know, a lot of response, you know, this is, is a very, very nice project. You know, I would anticipate ten to twelve architects, probably in that range of construction managers. What we're doing, or have put these together in, in an effort to make sure that we can maintain the schedule, assuming that the, the referendum passes, give the qualification packages out for both the C M and the architect and have those ready to be shortlisted, so give the committee plenty of time to review those. And by state statute, you're, you can shortlist down to no more than four, and you would interview then four architects, four construction managers, bring them in for interviews. At that time, when you shortlist, your O P M, your project manager, would put together the R F Ps, and they would be very specific, include draft contracts, a lot of language, and get very specific on exactly what both the architect and construction manager would be bidding on. So that, I think, is, is, you know, one of the other things I know Mike is, is gonna talk about once I've departed from this meeting. You know, certainly, we're very interested in continuing the relationship and, and, you know, submitting on the, the R F Q, R F P for the services that I have been providing. But, yeah, we did put the drafts together. There's a few minor things as far as final submission dates and things that need to go out. And then we, again, we feel that it's very important that whoever you choose for your project manager, they're the ones that put together the proposal request for the architect and for the C M, because you're gonna want their input on the contracts and all the other very particular things you're gonna be looking for to make sure that you get a very good apples-to-apples comparison and the, you know, the best selection for those critical services for the project.
Okay, and a question of clarification. We talked a few meetings back about what delivery method we thought was right for Wellington. And I think, if I remember right, the last thing we talked about was something in the area of possibly construction manager at risk. Do you remember where we were on that conversation? I think we wanted to get away from design bid-build.
Yeah, you do not, absolutely do not want to do design bid-build. You know, we would for a project of this size scale, and especially with the procurement issues we're seeing right now. Construction manager is gonna give you a lot of flexibilities, potentially getting early bid packages on the street. You wouldn't be able to do that necessarily with a, with a G C, and we would not recommend a general contractor. A construction manager is gonna come in, they're gonna be able to do additional constructability reviews. They will be the other estimator. You'll have your architect provide a detailed estimate, and your C M will provide detailed estimates. The C M can either do the project, see them at risk, where they hold back a contingency and they give you a guaranteed maximum price, or C M advisor. And, and certainly, I think, once you get the qualification packages in before you issue the R F P for the C M, you can determine amongst yourselves which is the best way to go. The majority of the projects we see are C M at risk, where the C M is, is gonna, once the project is bid, they're gonna do a contract amendment that locks them into a fixed guaranteed price for the project.
Okay, thank you. Any, any comments, questions from the committee so far?
What's our timing on the, I can go back and check the schedule on Trevor. What's the timing on the architect?
Those should, those are gonna, those are gonna come right after the O P M, very soon. So I will, I'll get those. I guess I haven't distributed them to everybody yet. You have, you haven't, you'd remember if you received that, right? Okay, so I've not distributed it to everybody yet, so.
So you mean the R F Qs would.
The R F Qs or the construction manager and the architectural design.
Would come out, and then the R F Ps would go out after the.
Yeah, the, the R F Qs would go out very soon to start getting the, the long list.
Right.
And then we would be looking to be prepared for it. If the referendum passes, then moving into the shortlist, and then that process would lead us to the proposals, the R F Ps. And I'm, I'm just making that process sound a little casual and easy, but that's the basic.
Do you want to set a timeline for this? If that goes to everybody, we should say we want feedback by X date, because Scott's the one that drafted those, and if there's any changes.
Right.
To finalize it, and we don't want to leave that just out there without a date. Like, we need feedback by, if you get it tomorrow morning, feedback by, what's the date?
Okay, well, today is Wednesday. How about next?
Because our schedule, it's on our schedule, I think, for the seven.
When are we putting them out, I guess, or when are we?
That's what he's saying, is to try to get them out.
It's on the schedule. It's next week, I think.
Yeah, it would be next Tuesday on the schedule, so why don't we say comments back by Tuesday, and then we'll try to get it out by the end of the week. Because I think the, the, I would love to meet the Tuesday, but I think it's an aggressive schedule, and we just have so much to manage.
Yeah, I mean, I also have to assume that we hired Scott for a reason. He wrote the R F Qs, so.
Yeah, and again, yeah, the, yeah, the, and the R F Qs is really just, you know, it's generating the interest. It's, it's getting, and, and again, we ask for very detailed information from all the designers and construction managers specific to school construction, projects they've managed within O S C G N R, state reimbursement, all that. So you can just evaluate those teams and then shortlist to four of each that you want to then request formal proposals from and, and an interview. So, yeah, I think the qualifications is pretty straightforward. Certainly, when you put the R F P together, I would, I would anticipate that there'll be a lot more detail and probably some review and input from the committee on specifically what you're asking for to make sure that you've got every T crossed, every I dotted, to make sure you capture all the required scope from both of those consultants to, to achieve the goal.
Okay, can we say nine P M. on, on Monday night, so that way when I come in the building?
Tuesday morning.
Tuesday morning.
Yeah, because what's the consensus of the committee members? Can you have your, if I get that he's out to you tomorrow morning or tonight, do you think you can have your comments back by Monday?
Are we looking to vote on these on the fifteenth at our next meeting to put out our truth release?
That's what we have to figure out is, that's the challenge. We don't have a meeting between now and, and next, and next Tuesday when we'd like to get them out, so.
If you like them, I'm thinking about it next Tuesday, so. I don't think you need to.
Right, I would say barring some drastic adjustment, I mean, again.
So get feedback and if you see, just get feedback direct to me, if you see something that is a no go, please point it out. And otherwise, if there aren't any no goes, we'll consider that consensus.
Yeah, and Mike, I believe those RFQs anticipate, um, give a deadline for questions, which I believe is the middle of the month, maybe the thirteenth. Um, so again, if anyone thought of something or they wanted to, to make a change. Um, you can certainly issue an amendment, an addenda to the RFQ, um, which would again allow you to get these things on the street in a timely fashion.
Okay, committee members feel okay with Monday?
Can I just make a comment, just so it's on the record, I, I think our committee knows, just reiterate, especially for anyone listening to this meeting. All of these things that we're talking about will line up with potential selections that have costs associated to them only after. Our, our.
Yeah, none of these lead to any commitment until after a referendum that approves, yes, that is correct. Thank you for that clarification, um, okay, anything else on the design or construction RFQs? Anne?
Yes, um, I have a question for Scott, Scott, you mentioned that the construction manager at risk. Would need to follow a fixed guaranteed price, it could come in under that price?
No, what, what it's, what happens is you, you would sign a contract with the CM, he's gonna give you a fee. For all the pre-construction up to the bidding phase, they're gonna give you an estimate of what their fee and, and the cost is to, to build the job. What they do is then is they would bid the project out, when all the bids are in, they will compile an amendment. To their contract and that would be what we call the GMP amendment, the guaranteed maximum price, so they, once they've bid it. And then within the, the structure of the contract will, will agree to a certain percentage of, um. Uh, uh, contingency that they build in for anything that, uh, that they forgot to scope out. So they'll, if, if something didn't get into one of their packages, they would own that. So you would agree to a certain contingency and then you would sign that price, and then if the project went over that price. It would be on the construction manager. Now, it, that doesn't mean that, you know, if you made a change or said, I want to add a third playground, for example. That would be something that would be covered under your contingency, you'll have a contingency. In, in a, in a CM at risk approach, the CM has a contingency for items that they potentially missed. So, when you, when you get into the project, you're gonna be managing a lot of, of pots of money. Um, and you know, and the OPM's goal in, in job is to make sure that all of those pots of money are adequate. You are informed on, you know, where you stand with each one of those and you manage those all the way through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, the other one that I'd like to have Scott talk about, I'm gonna skip ahead one on the agenda to the site analysis and engineering. The SCGO fifty-three form, this is something we've been talking about for a couple of meetings, um. There is some engineering required in the application process and, um, based on the work done by QA and M. Um, Scott was looking for a proposal from them. Because it was, he believed it would be less cost to the town and more efficient. Since they had already done preliminary work that we paid for, um, to have them complete that portion of the work. So, uh, with that introduction, Scott, you want to take it from there?
Sure, thank you, Mike, yeah, what Mike alluded to is, you know, we're coordinating a, a site visit, um, from the state. Because again, we want to make sure that the state, um, agrees with all the hard work that the site selection committee has done. That this is a, an appropriate site for the new building, so we're working on getting that scheduled with the state. Um, we actually received an email earlier today, they've requested, uh, a number of items of information that I'm gonna work on with Phil. Get that back to them tomorrow, um, I've already, uh, and if I can share my screen. If I could be enabled quickly.
Yeah, go ahead.
There we go. All right, um, so I've already started, um, and I sent this form, can everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd sent this off to, to Phil and Mike, started checking some of the boxes, filling in this form, this, this is a form. The SCGO five-three that you submit to the state of Connecticut when you're looking to, um, purchase a land or actually doing any project to make sure that the. Existing land is, is adequate, there's a number of maps, different things that need to be filed. Um, in then, uh, a, a number of requirements here, FEMA, FEMA flood maps. A whole bunch of other, um, criteria that needs to be assembled and then it's signed off by an engineer, um. So we felt that it would be appropriate since, um, uh, QA and M had hired a civil engineer. That, uh, did your concept sketch, um, that we reached out to them to see if they could assist with this. Again, we'd like to get this completed, make sure that review is in good standing, cause this would be an integral part, key part of the grant application. We wanna, we wanna make sure that this gets done, gets done in advance and is done right, that we're not down to the wire. So, um, you know, as Mike had stated, I did ask QA and M, uh, for a proposal. Uh, to provide the, uh, all the required maps and research required to do the oh five three and get the sign off. Um, normally we see this in the range of, of three, maybe four thousand dollars. Again, I think since they've already worked on the site, they're familiar with the site, uh, the proposal dated February twen- twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three from QA and M. Is for two thousand dollars to assist with this effort, um, and again, we, we feel that this is, is, is money well spent. Um, again, to get this key, um, part of the grant application, um, prepared and ready, assuming a successful referendum.
So Scott, um, to keep us on schedule, you'd be looking for an approval at this point now, right?
Correct, yeah, we would like to engage them, you know, get the committee's approval of this this evening. We'd like to engage them and, um, you know, in conjunction with the, the walkthrough that we're looking to facilitate within the next week or so. Um, get this approved to make sure that, uh, everything is, is in good standing with the state for the site selection.
Okay.
You know, it's.
But.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay, um, is anyone interested in making a motion for, uh, to engage QA and M? For the site analysis engineering for two thousand dollars? We have a motion, can I get a second? Anne, seconded? Any discussion on the motion?
I have a question, Mike.
Yes, go ahead, Ralph.
Um, with respect to this document and QA and M's work, uh, this is occurring prior to the referendum. So that's coming out of our pockets, is this document valid? Um, well, it's not gonna be valid if the referendum fails. So I'm just curious how this works in the big picture.
Referendum dollars aren't reimbursed by the state.
Understood.
So, um, this is an expense that you would incur, you know, either way, and again, we're, we're trying to make sure that we're, we've checked a box. In anticipation of filing a grant. Before June thirtieth.
Understand. Okay, so this is a, an expense out of our pocket, I got it, all right, thank you.
Uh, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why, why would, why would we not simply then defer this activity till after the referendum, so it is reimbursable?
I think it puts us pretty tight on timeline, um, and I think that was the discussion with Scott before, Scott, can you confirm that?
Yeah, I mean, we just felt, um, you know, getting this executed, um. You know, sooner than later, just to make sure that there was no issues with it, um, we're actually hoping to try and get the work done and submitted to the state. And, and potentially even get their approval before the referendum, um, just so that could be another, uh. Piece of information that, you know, could be put out to the public to let everyone know that, in fact, you know, it's taken one. Which, and again, we don't see this as being any kind of a stumbling block, I do think the state is gonna be, uh, fully supportive of the site that the committee has selected. Uh, but just to get this done in advance of filing the grant.
Did QA and M give you a schedule for the work, Scott? Anticipate?
Uh, they didn't give me a specific schedule for the work, but the two thousand dollars, I would anticipate that all the required paperwork, research could be done within a week.
Pete, did you have more?
Well, yeah, it, it just, I, I'm just reacting to what you said earlier, Mike, in terms of the blackout period and. This, this sounds to be like something that's discretionary and that's something that we could do after the referendum when we know the results. Um, yeah, Scott is saying, well, this will signify to the town that we're ready to proceed, we should not be ready to proceed till. The townspeople have weighed in, um, so I, I would respectfully suggest that we do this after the referendum, uh, as it's not. Essential that we do it now.
I think, um, the other thing to, to consider in our thoughts here about this is that. This could possibly have been done through colliers, um. But this method, because of QA and M's involvement already, when we hired them previously, is a less expensive route to take. Um, it, I believe if I understood right, Scott, and you correct me if I'm wrong, this was something. That you would have potentially done through either a subcontractor or through your company. And you felt this was a less expensive route to take, is that correct?
Well, yeah, it, it does need to be signed by a professional engineer who provides this information, so yeah, I think either way, we would have. Put it out, um, you know, for a proposal or, or seek, you know, on, on the committee's behalf as we did. Uh, to get a proposal, in this case, again, we feel that the, the value of two thousand dollars, um. You know, is, is a really strong value, you're not gonna do any better if you suck, um, additional. Uh, proposals and that, you know, again, that the consultant is familiar with the site.
And would this?
Yes, the only, the only, you know, critical thing is, we, we, you know, we, we absolutely cannot wait until the architect is on board with their engineer. Uh, because by the time you get your qualifications and you seek a proposal from the architect. Um, then I think you, you would really be under the gun to try and get this executed and able to file the grant application by June thirtieth.
Okay, and, um, is this a reimbursement eligible expense if it was done after the referendum?
Um. It, it may be, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say a definite, but, uh, it, it, it could be.
Justin?
So, I'm not saying that we're gonna get a better price, but procedurally, do we have to go out to bid with this? Or because of the prices, okay?
Yeah, just because of the price only two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mike?
Yep, go ahead.
I, I can see the value of, of taking this on now. However, with respect to the blackout period, uh, which is in place. Uh, a successful completion of this form is kind of a positive nod towards the, uh, uh, project. Now, from the public's perspect- perception and, uh, I, I have a problem with that. If we're gonna stick to a blackout period from the town's perspective, we're paying for this. It's going to look like a positive nod for the project in the public's eyes, and I think it would be best. We, we, we can initiate it now, but I wouldn't release the results until after the referendum, just my opinion.
Fair point to consider. Any other discussion on the motion?
Yes, I, I want to also concur with Ralph that this is an inappropriate action to be taking at this time. And should not occur till after the referendum.
Gary?
I'm wondering if I could get some clarification on just a point that Ralph made there, um, in terms of the, you know, I, I think I understand the blackout rules. Um, at the same time, this committee, you know, made a recommendation, a clear recommendation, so it's not like a surprise that. You know, it's not that, it, it's not a surprise that we've made a recommendation to recommend a, a new school on a new site, um, so. Uh, is there, can anyone explain to me what the, what the difference there would be? Um, I don't, I don't feel like we'd be advocating for anything here, I think we'd be moving forward as much as we can with the recommendation. Prior to the referendum, but maybe somebody else has some thoughts on that.
I mean, I think if we, if we wanted to be particularly cautious, Ralph's comment about holding the release of the report might be a valid comment in that area. But continuing our work is the same thing as continuing the environmental work that we're doing now, we're paying environmental consultant to evaluate conditions. And we're discussing the results of that report only because it's continuation of the work, um.
Yeah.
I, I guess that's how, honestly, I, I don't know if, um. Erica, you have any thoughts on the blackout period or?
You're, you're talking about the land like so, I was going to.
Okay, understood.
So I'll just, I'll just follow up and then say, kind of, that's what I thought, I, I feel like that's a continuation of our work, I think it's. I, I think it's wise to do now, um, I, you know, we're gonna be up against, or again, if this referendum passes. Matter if it passes or not, honestly, we're, we're gonna have a lot of timelines that we're up against. Um, if there's anything that we can do ahead of time and be ahead of the game and be ready for, um, the grant application and what follows, I think we should do it.
I'm not suggesting that, that we not move forward with this, all I'm suggesting is that the results not to be. Published until after the referendum.
Understood.
And, and it may be that, that the state, you know, the state may not render a decision until after the referendum. I mean, again, we'd like to get this, um, information in their hands and get that process moving as soon as possible. Um, you know, certainly can't speak for the state, sometimes the, the wheels of progress do move slowly.
Anne, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to say that this has been on our timeline, so this isn't something that just came up today, is that correct? This is on our timeline all along.
Yes. Justin, I think you had your hand up there for a moment?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to make sure with, we're, you know, we're under discussion of a motion, are we meeting Ralph's? Um, comments, cause I think they're good under the motion that we have.
The motion is simply to do the engagement and we can choose administratively to hold the report if we get it before the referendum.
Thank you.
Coming, coming. Yeah, so one of the things that I think people need to realize about the blackout period is. We are still basing our actions on fact. We are not going out and saying something subjective, the oh fifty-three is a factual document. It's done by a professional engineer who is not, it, it's not. It's not something that, you know, we're saying, well, this or that, it's a, we have to do this process. And it's a fact as it goes, just as the, and the, uh, environmental study is factual information done by. An outside agency, so I, I'm not sure that this applies to the blackout period, um, from the standpoint of. Getting someone to vote yes or no.
Yeah, and, and if I may, just to clarify, the, the work that the engineer would be doing is factual. In filling out a form that gets submitted to the state, so the state can render a final decision. The engineer has no opinion whatsoever, he's just compiling all of the required data. Um, putting that in, in attaching that to this form, signing this form, and then that form gets submitted to the state. The state then renders their opinion to say, yes, we agree, we're gonna fund. Assuming a successful referendum, we're gonna fund a school project, we feel this site is appropriate.
Okay, well, I don't want to spend a lot of time trying to dance around, talking around what we're not talking about. Um, so I think that issue we need to leave alone and we beat it to death, is there any more discussion on the motion itself? All right. We'll do a roll call vote.
Anne? Anthony, yes. Gary?
I, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Brianna?
Yes.
Ralph?
No.
Justin?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Two no, then the remainder yes.
I have seven yeses and two noes, that's from Carrie's, okay, um. Okay, so, um, Scott, thank you for your help tonight, I'm gonna ask you to leave the meeting now. Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Scott.
Good night, Scott.
No. Um, okay, so, uh, now that Scott is gone, the last item in new business is the RFP slash Q. I'll explain the difference in a minute for the owner's project manager. Different from the process Scott explained a minute ago where we are going to get qualifications first. And then ask for proposals from a limited group, this is both in one. This is for the owner's project manager, essentially. This is for the owner's project manager, essentially the type of work Scott's doing for us right now, but post referendum. Because of the way the funding works and the reimbursement, you essentially make a break at the referendum and you start with a new contract. So that contract can fit into the reimbursement schedule for whatever services are reimbursable. Um so, when we put this out and you all have it in email. Um I sent you an updated version this afternoon right before the meeting. It's just some edits since you saw the previous version. Um and basically, the purpose of this is to get the qualifications and the proposal at the same time. From owner's project manager firms. That will do the same kind of work that Scott is doing, but carry on after the referendum if it passes. So um what I'd like to do is get essentially the green light from the um. From the group and any discussion is welcome, of course, um but get a green light from the group to move forward with getting these out. And um the schedule is in the proposal and the idea would be that we would have the. Proposals back from the firms that are interested the same day. Or I've proposed moving it a couple days sooner, a couple days before the referendum, just to give us a little more time to review them if the referendum passes. And then decide to engage a firm after the, after the referendum. So. The date you have is the twenty-eighth. Of March, the referendum date. I've actually looked into pushing that back to the twenty-fifth. Which would allow five days between the twenty-fifth and the thirtieth, the thirtieth being our target to um. Notify, um and I wanna make sure I quote these dates properly. Issue them March sixth. Questions due March thirteenth. Proposals due back to us March twenty-fifth. Interview dates tentative, these are alternative, of course, but interview dates April fifth and award date April seventh. So the idea being we would know by the time we are interviewing that we're past referendum. If the referendum doesn't pass, we don't move on to that step. Better.
I have a couple, so I I gave Phil a couple, knowing you were working on this, a couple of mine are edited. The date on the front page was wrong. As far as the estimated agent selection date, you have um April seventh. Would that be a date there would need to be action by this committee?
Uh, yes.
Okay, just for reference, uh April seventh is Friday, is Good Friday, and then it's a holiday. If that makes a difference. So that's in in two areas, so that was. One question, we wanted to stick with that. And then under scope of services, item three, number two. Provide consultation services and advice by working closely with the town's architects, engineer, construction manager. I assume those mean for the project? Hmm, okay. I just wanted to double check since we uh have an engineer, town engineer, but the other.
Well, and it's sort of, it it's sort of all-inclusive language, because if for some reason the town engineer got brought in for some component. Like if you were discussing um connecting into drainage at the street and the town engineer got involved. It's just saying that you you know you're gonna have to have this help with this conversation.
And I asked specifically because I I know this was sort of drafted from from an appraisal document, which is great to do, don't invent the wheel, don't have to. Um but that town may have had. Some of those, some of those role, you know, art with a town architect, or we do not. So if the intent was. Town and projects related, um people that are fine with it otherwise.
The the town that we took this uh from did not have a town architect. But it was in the proposal anyway because there would be the potential.
Okay, and then um just a little. Uh, I think my answer to the project's schedule was answered by Scott's. Design, bid, build, or construction manager for delivery. So if we say in the O P M. Uh no, in the. Sorry, if we, are we gonna take this, change this in this document?
It's gonna say construction manager.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, that was a, that was a question Phil and I knew that we had to get answered, which is why I asked.
Okay, um and then, really? We'll start construction twenty twenty in December? That's the plan?
That's on the calendar, that's straight from the timeline.
Yep, I didn't go back and compare them, but I thought December, really? Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, because starting construction could be as simple as, you know, cutting trees. That they can do in winter. And if it's winter like this, they can, they want, they could work all winter.
I could do site work.
Except, yeah, except February twenty eighth. Uh other question, Ralph?
Okay, back to Erica's comment on uh on three, two. Uh wouldn't it be better to say, because the town this came from, I think that they had an architect on board prior to going to referendum. And uh wouldn't it be wiser to say that town's engineer uh and. Comma, a project architect?
Architect can be working for the town anyway, the town signing the contract with them. I I think it's. I think it's a good question, but I I think the answer is that it it's, doesn't matter, that it still implies the same thing.
Yeah, Ralph, that's why I asked what the intent of it was, so that I could make sure I had an understanding as someone who would have to sign said contract.
Understand, understand. I was just offering another way to word it, that's all.
Other questions, comments? Uh thank you, Jim, by the way, for, Jim being in this field threw me a whole bunch of edits. Um he he did them in red and he apologized if it looked like he bled all over the form. Um and I did incorporate a lot of your edits in here.
Yeah, I mean, I I wanna give everybody else a chance. I still have a question, I guess, just for clarity. As to what this process looks like for us and um. You know, I'm I'm concerned generally about the timing for review and analysis of these. Both this and the A E services and the C M at risk.
Those are warmer.
I I mean, this conceivably could be too, but uh to that end, I mean, we aren't. This is an R F Q, R F B, but we don't seem to be factoring. Fee proposals in as any sort of a selection criteria as to what this is. As to how it's being evaluated and how are we evaluating qualifications and ranking them and how much time do we have to do said ranking?
There's criteria in there, there's evaluation criteria in there.
There is, but it doesn't include fee as part of that evaluation criteria. Um which is one of the comments I I mentioned.
Yeah, and I think, and I I read that, but I think the way you answer that is you is you evaluate first the qualifications as laid out in the. In the um solicitation and then um look at, and then you look at the fees. And the fees are easy because you don't have to evaluate fees. You know which one's the highest and which one's the lowest. Um and uh and then you just have a discussion of if. If you're not taking the lowest, why you aren't, perhaps the lowest you determined wasn't properly qualified.
I guess, but that's the criteria, because we're assigning a weighted ranking based on qualifications of all respondents, but then. What's the metric if their fee is astronomical? You know, we don't provide any, there's no. Metric for including a fee evaluation as a part of the analysis of the respondents. Um, have you seen that? I see it all the time, but I mean, admittedly, I don't get overly involved in O P M fees. I don't see that end of it. Um but. I do see and respond to these all the time and a qualification based ranking and then followed by a fee proposal. So. I don't know how it was done in our reference document, you know, how that process went. I do know that they had a, you know, they had. It was a different sequence, it was a different process for them altogether, right? So they almost had a project much more inclined than we will. Um at the time of this election. So, you know, I think there's a value to. Having a way to or a metric by which to judge. How B is going to be impacted. I don't know whether, you know, my suggestion is the best one, you know, but based on how this was laid out. Um, you know, that it's a discussion I think we should have. And then that goes into the time factor as well, because if you wanna do a separate qualifications bank ranking, base ranking rather. That involves us coming together a little bit and evaluating, you know.
Well, what would happen first would be the qualifications based ranking. You do that first.
Correct.
And then, and then make your list and then look at the pricing. And if the pricing follows, great. If the pricing doesn't follow. There, then there's a discussion of, is the, you know, is it a one dollar difference?
It's just, it's a two-part review by this.
Yes.
Board essentially, and it's, it's, I'm wondering how we get that accomplished. It just feels aggressive, you know, and and that's not the same, we can't do it, but um. You know, there is kind of a group discussion where we get the debt qualifications while we like, you know, and and or rank them individually and then.
We would like, I mean, how much time, so I don't, just I completely agree with you, right? We have to be able to justify all of this and and make sure. We check every box and do our due diligence. What kind of time, additional timeframe do you think, and and I ask you with your experience in this industry, would be adequate, an additional week?
Depends on how effectively we can meet as a group, you know, and and respond as a group. So it it's, that's why I say it's kind of a discussion as to what we feel. We effectively need, I mean, there was a two-day period previously, so we've extended that a little bit with price, which is somewhat helpful, but um. You know, there's almost a, okay, here's, here's all the submissions we got. You open the qualification packages. Somebody prepares some sort of a metric for evaluation that we can, you know, uh rank them by. The errors in this document.
So I had envisioned creating, I had envisioned creating that evaluation sheet based on what's in here. Uh and having that ready for the day we rip open the packages. And um also reaching out to all the people who would do the initial review, whether it's the whole group or a smaller group. And having everyone set with a date ready.
So I, I guess that's the important part, so we should establish those dates so that we're prepared for them now. Um and if that fits in the schedule, that's great. Um and then. That at least could be a determination, as long as all that can happen before we meet to award and approve this contract. You know, that is achievable. I don't know what our meeting schedule is, but. Or if we take a special meeting, but.
Did we? My my brain is failing me on this one. When we hired Scott, did we do a subcommittee? Did we do a small?
There was a smaller group that did it.
Yeah, a small group of people interviewed the firms and then made a recommendation.
To the membership.
And that group came in and did a presentation.
I I don't know if it was even a presentation, I don't think. I think it was just a recommendation, right? I can't remember now, it was so long ago. Anybody?
I think it wa, if I recall, it was a recommendation. I don't think. I can't remember if I was on it, but I recall the process.
I think they did a quick presentation for the the full group. I mean, I might be wrong about that, because we've lived this for a couple years now, but. I think we did this in a subcommittee, a small group, and we had rankings and we did the same type of thing. There were no price. Go through the qualifications first, rank them, and then look at price and where did it fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, that's just the discussion that.
Yeah. No, I had to find what that process.
And maybe that, was this selection criteria, did you alter it?
No, I think we took this criteria from what was in it already, right? Yeah.
Garrett?
Yeah, I was just gonna agree that, you know, looking at the the evaluation criterias, it's it's very simple. There's, you know, one. You know, there's three items and one out of three, you know, each one is worth equal weight. I don't, I don't know if there's anything wrong with that, but I I do think we should mention that that uh the. That the proposed price is is taken into account somehow. Um I, you know, I think the more, the the clearer you can be about how. How the, how the applicants are gonna, or the the proposers are gonna be evaluated, the. The better proposals you get, you'll get. Um I think it's in there i- in terms of what we're looking for. But it, the re, the evaluation piece itself is very. Very bones, I guess, so um I don't know how. I don't know how to fix that right now, but I I would at least mention, mention something about cost in there, because if it's not in there, somebody could say, well. You know, why'd you throw me out? You don't, you 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 had a three-part criteria and I I was the best one regardless of price.
Then I asked for your scoring metric.
It's not in either one of the other documents. Um.
In what?
In any of the.
Which other ones go?
It is not in the R F Q, it is not in for architect work or uh.
Oh, that we're about to put out, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, that's about to send out.
Those are R Qs, so we wouldn't need a cost.
It doesn't matter, there's still, you're still putting in evaluation criteria, that's what I'm looking at. So the evaluation criteria that's in the R F Q for the architect. Has uh five points, it's out of a hundred, and it basically assigns rating points for. Different things, experience with projects of similar size and scope thirty-five, organization team structure for this project, twenty points. There's five different.
No fees in that first part.
No, but that's my point, is that's all you would, be, because it's only an R F Q, you would simply add that on as an additional piece. If you wanted to. It, you are not required to go to lowest bidder, right? So, if if you have the the most points, but you're a billion dollars, as soon as you put that in there. As as a point rating or as a separate item, you're locked in now by points.
Well, there there are ways around that too. There's basically saying the uh the town waves the right um or maintains the right to wave.
It's a one liner. I know exactly what you're saying, but I'd rather.
So.
I'd rather see that than put something in, because if you're the cheapest, the least expensive. And so you get a buck twenty-five points, but your rest of your criteria are lowest of all, but you have now have the highest points.
So we get out a line, so we get out a line that says um. The uh once, once qualifications have been reviewed. Price will be reviewed, but the town reserves the right to select. The bidder that is in the best interest regardless of price.
Right, yeah, we can bring forward the language to that end, but I think, you know, as a group, we have other, we debate other things from the town that way.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
But, I mean, as a committee, we should kind of come to an, an understanding of how much of an impact. Or how important cost is in the analysis of this proposal.
Can we do that on the fifteenth?
We can do that on the fifteenth. So I I would also say that the selection criteria, as long as we. Mention something about fee being incorporated into the evaluation can be as generic as that. Our rubric can go into however much detail, we can take that one-third and say, okay, we wanna assign five points of this.
Right, that's what I assumed, we would pick, we would pick the key areas out of this and add that to the rubric within those sections.
Yeah, so we, the, whatever the subgroup or the larger group, we can decide however we wanna do that. But there should be some reference to fee being an integral part of this um evaluation metric and that we have the right to. Select based on total package in the best interest of we, we waive any informalities and. And select in the best interest of the town as judged by the school.
Yeah. Chris?
Yeah, I uh, there's a lot of talk about adding language. I just wanna comment and maybe get feedback. Do you feel like the. Statement that is listed right after the three criteria that says that the town of Wellington will base its initial ranking? Is that enough that we're saying that's our, just our initial process, where we are reserving that there's obviously a. A a follow-up process that we are going to take. Um, does that allow leniency on our side to make that decision without worrying about adding language about costs?
Well, I think it's halfway there based on this conversation. I think it basically begets one more line after that that says something to the effect of what we're talking about. Once qualifications have been evaluated, price will be. Reviewed, but the town reserves the right to select in the best interest, something to that effect. So you're, you're right that that sets the stage. I think we just need another line to make it clear. Yeah.
Yeah.
What are, what is the feeling, what's the consensus of the group about if we make that change? And correct a couple of errors like Monday versus Tuesday and things like that and fix April seventh? Uh because it's a holiday. Does the committee feel confident enough that we can go ahead and put this out? Or do you want it to come back to the committee for a special meeting or what is the feeling?
Oh, as a stickler for details, Mike, I, I, I would always like to see the finished document.
Oh, sure, yes. How about if it's sent out, how about if it's sent out to everyone uh, for another round of comments?
It could work.
I get a chance to read your second draft.
Sure.
And I was a little bit mixed up.
Just to bring it online, Pete Latigent has just appeared in the room now, just if you're, you're wondering where the voices are coming from, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was in transit, but I.
No, no, you put effort in, you're here.
So, oh, sorry, maybe you and I can make some adjustments, find some of that language that Jim is talking about tomorrow morning. And then send out a new updated. Change of dates, add the criteria, couple of things, we add appendix, no appendix in here. That people would be interested in, I wrote um, just some minor things, and then we can highlight what those changes are. I mean, it's, it, it's not a fifty page document, so. If we can do that in the morning and then, and then send it back out, then people can have the time to review it and then get feedback. If there's anything final, we can get it out on Monday.
I got, I got a couple of other big ones if we wanna.
Why are we asking them to email you with two different emails?
Because I don't have a way to continually monitor the SBC inbox, I have to log into it to monitor.
I would just have to go to the year and look, I think that would be appropriate. It's a town, it's a town email, because things are contained.
I'm just trying to think of belts and suspenders.
I, I think, you know, when you say they have to go to both and there's an error with one.
I'll take it out right now.
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
One, and it's, it's a town email, and one is a dot org, one is a dot gov. I just think it could all be too confusing.
Very good.
My little one, Jimmy got a big one.
Uh, well, what, what are the terms of the agreement? What, what are we asking them to sign? Are we providing that? You know, is there a legal document that they're, that they're gonna be bound by contractually to perform their services under? Um, you know, it's different from AA services agreements, but I can't, I, I, I honestly don't know what it is for OPM.
Yeah, I mean, for OPMs, they use, they typically use a modified form of AA forms.
Yeah, I assume.
And uh, so we would, just as happened with our previous engagement, we would get the form from them as their proposed contract. And then our people in Wellington would review it to make sure.
Our attorney review.
The attorney and the finance office would review it to make sure.
At a minimum, we should reference what the form of the, what that green, what that document is that we intend to proceed under, so that everybody is operating under the same set of general guidelines. Meaning if it's gonna be AA document, whatever the heck OPM is.
No, they're gonna provide their document and we're gonna tell them if it's okay.
I get that, but it would be based on a.
But we don't even know, they're, they're different, people may modify things in a different way, so.
I get that, but then how do we compare apples to apples as to what services they're providing?
It's one of the proposals, cause they have to follow the terms of the proposal.
They've got a scope of work.
But RRP requests what the scope of work, you, you got, like, there's a. They could say we have a standard one page, here's our contract agreement, it's uh, we're gonna be an OPM.
And we'll tell them that they did not, they did not respond appropriately to our solicitation.
So, I, I'm just, I've never seen it not reference the form of contract and interview.
Like, cause there isn't a standard AA contract for this.
So. Um, that's one question. The other one, where if I could find it, is this asked for um. A lump sum fee proposal? But we ask them to break at each stage of the project, what stages are we asking them to define? Do we have a standard bid form that they're gonna be filling out for us? Or are we just going to be evaluating after the fact based on whatever they give us? Uh, you know, it's, it's a. Here's how we're asking you to give us the, the data so that we can evaluate your fee. Um, again, this is all just trying to get apples to apples so that we understand the scope of services between ten different OPMs, or whatever the case may be. And I expect the same in the AA services and C and RIS services agreement, and those all reference standard contracts and have drafts included in this that are, we'd expect you to, to carry. So. I don't know, am I saying, am I just talking a lot and making this more complicated than these?
No, no, I can see what you're saying, I just think that, I, I think it may be a complexity that we don't have to delve into. I think, I think if we first evaluate the qualifications and um, people have done, the people, people are gonna want this to work. They're not gonna send us a one pager and say, you know, if you like this, we'll go to, we'll go to work together. Um, they're gonna do a good job to express their um, qualifications and how they'll do it. And um. Then uh, it, it should be pretty easy to pick a top four to interview, and if we have questions, we can ask those questions in the interviews. While you're looking for that, do you mind if I just go to another?
Yeah, no, go to other people, I'm sorry, I want other people to comment, so.
Sure, Ralph?
Uh, Mike, I was just going back to uh, um, our discussions over uh, Scott's hire. And. We made that decision on February second, twenty twenty two, and it makes reference to a task group, but um. Nowhere in previous minutes can I find out who was on that task group?
Okay.
Just background stuff, that's all.
Thank you. Um, while Jim is looking, any other comments or questions?
Good one, Jim.
I know, I, I'm, I'm looking to see what the AA reference would be, but I'll be darned if I can find it.
Uh, yeah, that's what, that's what I've heard from people, there isn't a good form for it, so they could take. They make their own, they sort of chop and hack out of.
So having said all of that. Talked about the proposal. Um. We'll continue to clean up, like, make sure all the format is cleaned up and everything, I don't worry about that. Um, but mostly, and then just responses to questions sometimes, we'll have to come up with a. How quickly we can turn those around to maintain their schedule, but again, I don't think that's too big a deal with this one. And we'll maintain a question and answer log so that everybody gets the same information. Did we do any? Um, like, pre-bid meeting, the OPM for services to date, like prior to? No, we just submitted qualifications.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in that.
I've done them before when I did the roof project, but it's only when they have specific questions, this is so.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't necessarily think it's.
Yeah, you just, it's any questions that come in, we're gonna post anyways, you share them with everybody.
Yeah.
You put them up on.
That's it. I'm done.
All right, can I um, just uh, make a comment about Erica's Good Friday or that seventh day?
Yeah.
Um, now that you rolled it back and I understand Jim's point about who's available, who's doing this and the work. Uh, my feeling is that this person, this uh, agent pending the referendum should be selected on the fifth, which is our regular meeting. Yeah, like, we could, like, that is it.
I'm sorry, I still have to say.
So I'm looking at um, that shortlist, so if you, you back this up, but I'm just looking at the timeframe. Published on the sixth, uh, questions by the thirteenth, which is honestly very vast, it's a week. Um, and then they basically have uh, two, not even two weeks to write.
Yep.
Twelve days. Yep, um, and let's be honest, this is, they're gonna have these stuck. They're gonna add some minor points in just so everyone knows.
Other towns had only like six days between questions and.
They have these written now. Yeah, for projects they've already applied to, they just will do some Wellington stuff for us. But if we did the short, that shortlist by the thirtieth, oh, I lost my dates, sorry, um. I, I think it'd be nice to have that interview uh, agents. On the third with a recommendation on the fifth. Cause then you could short tell them on the thirtieth, and they would already know the, the date of the interviews, but you can tell them on the Thursday. You're coming in for interview or you're zooming on Monday, the third. Did I get that right? April?
Yeah.
Yeah, Monday, the third.
Does that make sense?
Right.
And then because we have a regularly scheduled meeting on April fifth. We roll right into it and there's, if it's, if we're go, we're go, but that's, then we don't have to have a special meeting and, right, they're on board.
So you're saying, Mike, again, we don't always have to do what everybody else does, but.
Right.
This. Aggressive, what appears aggressive schedule to us is not.
No, it's, it has more time in it than some of the other schedules we saw, some of the other schedules we saw had like one week.
Right.
Between um, the issuance and the, and the questions, one, just one week. And, and here we've got, uh, oh no, we have one week here. Um, no, it was between the questions and the um, proposal due, they had just a few days, like four days or something.
Yeah, it is, it is standard. Most of the packages standards.
Yeah, the key to it is we have to be ready to answer the questions right away.
That's correct.
Because you can't, you can't take two days to answer the question and then expect them to have a proposal due two days later.
We don't wanna have it on the twenty fifth, they were gonna wanna bump that to the twenty fourth, cause the twenty fifth is a Saturday.
It's a Saturday. I did see that, I don't tell myself that.
So, well, we're gonna wanna be set by two PM, somebody's gonna need to be here to receive and make sure that they.
Twenty four. Due date is twenty four.
Um, yeah.
So they come.
I mean, that's three weeks, that's, that's fine, and this is an attractive project, we'll get.
Right.
Plenty of responses for it, I, I, that, that time is.
Yeah, so they'll be in, so they'll be in by two PM on Friday, they come into the administrative assistant at the select one's office. So they come in sealed, we'll document that they're all here.
Yeah, it, it's not their submission when I'm worried about it, it's the ability for it to properly vet and evaluate.
Right, right.
Which is the real site for us, but.
I've done enough of these now where I know that these bigger firms, every morning, that's the first thing they do. They check to see what has been uploaded for new projects and off they go. So they, when this is posted, they will see it immediately.
You know, they could, they could, someone would decide if they're gonna pursue or not.
Yeah, they'll do a quick meeting of the various key people and, yeah. Okay, other discussion on this topic? All right, Anne?
So between um, receiving all of the proposals on March twenty fourth and interviewing on April third, will there be a committee that will? Take the long list and make it into a short list?
So we'll finalize that, yeah.
And that'll have, you'll schedule that when it's time.
With all of you, we'll, we'll keep the lines of communication open so we can keep this. We can get a group and have everyone warned ahead of time, plenty of time to plan.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Okay, anything else on this topic? All right, um, future business, any items people are looking for for future agenda? Um. What are, what were we talking a little while ago for the next meeting?
So we have the environmental is next meeting, we have the minutes for next meeting, we have the oh five three, next meeting. Um, if we, if we have an update, and then selection criteria, those are the four things I just wrote down.
Yes, that was the one I was trying to remember, selection criteria. Thank you. Anybody else?
I have something for us to think about post referendum, because it's dependent on the referendum and where we go. There's been much discussion about us not completing our charge. Um, I think we all know that our charge is multifaceted and it's not all that is completed at referendum. And item ten, which is identify future uses, if we could um, maybe start a, a subcommittee to really. Focus on some of that to bring to the whole committee post referendum. Um, and we can have that discussion. I'd like to begin, continue, but in a subcommittee to bring to the whole committee. But it's an item that would only happen post referendum.
Yeah, I was gonna actually mention that as well, someone asked about some comments that I made at a previous meeting about future uses, so I was gonna. Suggest we might wanna bring that up again, so thank you, Erica.
Got it. What does that coincide with the facilities study?
I think that's something to talk about, right? So the facility study will delve into the, the needs of both the town and the buildings, and this is like, we'll start a, a smaller focus committee on.
Certain times, those gears grind.
That's right.
Connect with each other.
Here's what we think can be utilized and using that study, uh, those ones get passed to actually assist with some of that work. But I mean, we talked in general terms here. Um, and then you kind of pushed off to the selectmen to say, you know. We want you to do some of that, but we, we're not, uh, we don't need to define a uh, use and a cost. That's not in that uh, item, but I think having some real serious conversation here, once we know the direction of the project.
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss it next time, but it'd be good to have that, or at least have a. An update as to where that facilities, you know, piece.
Yeah.
Is, is looking at from a long term schedule perspective.
Yeah, there's a, um, Monday is the public hearing for ARPA, and that item will be on there, so they couldn't. We talked about it, but because it was new, it has to go to a public hearing, so that will be Monday. Um, so I think by our next meeting, again, we don't need to move forward till after, so there, if there's gonna be action, it will happen. Um, after Monday at ARPA.
Um, I do wanna go, I'm just gonna quickly drop back to an earlier, uh, I forgot to mention in communications, item five. Um, because I know there has been a lot of concern in town and with this committee that we. Um, are respecting and communicating with the Hall Foundation, I do wanna make sure everyone knows that I did. Um, a while back now, I don't know the exact date, but I did communicate back to the Hall Foundation of the status of where everything is. So, we are, we are not ignoring them. Um, okay. Present to speak. Anybody in the room like to speak? They have no, okay, let's go to online. Nick? Nick?
Nick, telephone forty nine, Earl. Um, I just think you guys are putting the SBC in a position of violating the blackout rules. Um, in regards to what Scott was talking about earlier. I do like what Ralph had to say though, as far as just not making them publish, I think that would be a way to uh, kinda cover you guys. Um, also, cost associated with looking into those two buildings is important to the, uh, to the town, so. Don't know why that was uh, kinda brushed aside. Also, earlier, there was no mention about communications with uh, in regards to my FOIA requests um, to the SBC. Uh, I wanted to let you know that there are two FOIA requests in, I know Erica is aware of them, not sure if other people are. Uh, one is very um, general, um, because of games that have been played in the last one. So it just says all emails from SBC members, board of finance members, and property owners that relate to the property selected, Erica's family, for the new school. This includes the use of government or personal emails that were used to discuss such property. Um, and this information is considered to the benefit of the general welfare. Uh, and that request was asked to be given in electronic format. And then there is another one, which I won't go line item, but there's another one that's uh, encompassing a lot more. Uh, communication specifically between uh, members, so just wanted the SBC to be aware of that, and that's all I have found, thank you.
Anybody else online? Who else? If you don't have the little yellow hand or orange hand, uh, you can unmute, call out your name. Last call in the room or online? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. A second, please? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and wave goodbye, thank you all.
Aye.
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 Bye bye.
Bye y'all. Aye.
Eight oh one.